Good evening. I would like to call the order, the Port Orchard City Council's special meeting for December 5th. Tonight, we have a special guest, Assistant Senior Patrol Leader Scott Sorder from Boy Scouts Troop 1529, and he's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are on to our first item of business this evening, which is a public hearing for the proposed 2017-2018 biennial budget. Treasurer Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Petan Su, members of the Port Orchard City Councils, distinguished guests, citizens of Port Orchard. A public hearing on the proposed 2017-2018 biennial budget is required on or before the first Monday of December. The hearing allows council to hear public input, consider public comments, and make any changes as indicated by the majority of the council. Citizens and community organizations are encouraged to participate by providing the council with their input for future infrastructure priorities, public safety enhancements, cultural and recreational opportunities, and other public services. Following citizen comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the council may continue with its deliberations concerning the 2017-2018 biennial budget. If the council has any additional changes, these should be conveyed to staff so that a final 2017-2018 budget can be presented for adoption on December 13th, 2016. Staff recommends opening the public hearing.
Okay. This time, I will open the public hearing on the 2017-2018 biennial budget. Is there anyone wishing to comment on our 2017-2018 budget? Ron, do you have any comments for us on the budget? Jerry? Okay. At this time, I will close the public hearing on the proposed budget. So we will start our deliberations on the 2017-2018 biennial budget at our next council meeting next week, December 13th. So, Mr. Martin, unless you want to stick around and talk about LID codes, you can probably just dismiss yourself for the evening.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to be first on the agenda, and thank you for your support. Thank you.
So, we are on to item two on the agenda, which is a business item, Revision of Land Use Regulatory Codes, LID Requirements. Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you, council and mayor, and thank you for agreeing to stay more than the four minutes we would have otherwise stayed if we had not had this on the agenda tonight. Under the Federal Clean Water Act, we are considered a Phase II stormwater permit community, and as such, the Phase II permit is administered by the Department of Ecology, and we have a December 31st deadline to adopt a new stormwater management manual, the 2012, which was revised in 2014 Stormwater Management Manual, or equivalent, by the end of this year. And within that manual is a requirement for low-impact development stormwater techniques, and a requirement that development that comes in under the new manual, use those techniques where it's feasible before they can seek essentially a waiver to do a more conventional stormwater technique. So we are facing an end-of-year deadline for both adopting the new manual and also going through and scrubbing our code to remove any barriers to low-impact development, and those barriers could be anything from our public work standards, which maybe would allow a rain garden or some other facility within our street right-of-way, to our landscaping and parking codes, which would allow rain gardens to be incorporated into the landscaping for a parking lot that would be proposed for construction in the city. And like I said, this is a mandate. We really don't have a lot of choice in the matter. The city could have, at its own expense, developed its own equivalent stormwater manual, which I believe the county is in the process of finalizing theirs right now, and Andrea is here to correct me if I say anything incorrect, because this is not actually my department. But, in any event, the counties chosen to write their own manual, but most smaller jurisdictions are just adopting the standard Department of Ecology manual, and then it's sort of up to them to do a gap analysis and look at their code to figure out what needs to be fixed and where barriers might exist and to remove those. Unfortunately, we have a lot of mandates at the city, and they've kind of been stacking up one on top of the other, and so most of the things that need to be done are being done as part of this current update. We are going to continue updating our subdivision regulations. As you know, we have interim regulations in place, which we hope to bring forward in January and February, and while we didn't identify specific barriers there, we're bringing those codes forward at that time, and I think we're going to reference back to the mandate for low-impact development is one of the reasons for doing that, even though there aren't significant changes there. The other thing that I'll say is that we are in the process of reorganizing our code, and by February, it is our hope that we will have an integrated development code, and our attorney is actually calling it a unified development code, where all of the things that a developer would need are going to be in one title, and it'll be broken into subtitles. As you remember, the subdivision code was adopted on an interim basis along with a permit processing chapter, and that permit processing chapter is actually what we'd like to use for stormwater permits going forward, so that there's a standard process for applying for a public works permit, for a planning permit, for a building permit, and it's uniform throughout our code, whereas today, the stormwater permit process is totally undefined. It says that we can give permits, but it really doesn't explain how you go about getting from application to issuance, and so this is really a two-step process where we're achieving basic compliance by the end of the year, and we're trying to come up with a more integrated code in February. I should also mention that due to a miscommunication with the attorney and our departments, we sent out Title 13 to you, and we are not actually bringing that forward by the end of the year. That was supposed to be something that we work on between now and February, and so you can remove that from your packet or from something that you have to study for the next meetings here in December. And finally, we started renumbering some of the code based on this new unified development code concept, which is going to be located in Title 20, and we realized after we sent this out that we had already renumbered the zoning codes to move to Title 20, but they're actually, they correspond with what is currently in Title 16, and so we'll fix that, and it's going to go into 16 for the end of the year, and then in February, everything's going to go back to Title 20. But it's a challenge when you have two parallel code-writing processes taking place, and it, things are being renumbered, and you're trying to work on both of them and keep them moving, and then kind of have to take a step back at times. So with that said, I think I'll ask Andrea if she has anything that she wants to add to the presentation before we go through the individual code sections. Okay. So, I'm just going to take these section by section here, starting with Title 12. And essentially, we're adding a new general provision section to Title 12 that essentially states that nothing in Title 12 is intended to create a barrier to LID. It's just a catch-all statement that makes sure that if something appears to create a barrier to LID, that we can sort of sidestep that as part of the process of implementing our new stormwater management manual. We also address for undergrounding of utilities, we wanted to add a provision that allows for different separation requirements when you have permeable pavements, and that is because when you have a utility line beneath a permeable roadway, it becomes a conduit for water essentially, and you need greater separation in order to maintain the integrity of the subgrade of the road. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Engineer. All right. So, moving forward, Title 13, as I mentioned, is not under consideration at this time, and so we'll move to Title 15, which consists of 1532 and 1534.
I don't see 1532. What page are we?
Page 40 is where it starts, or 1534.
1534. Oh, 1532 is page 88, so somehow they got, they're a little bit out of order here. In any event, Chapter 1532 is our existing stormwater management chapter of our code. We currently do not have a 1534, and the idea here is that, and currently, our process for issuing permits for grading and site development in advance of getting your building permit is that we issue a site development activity permit. However, our code is written so that there is a clearing and grading permit, and there's a stormwater management permit, yet our practice doesn't quite match exactly what is in our existing code language. And so the new code has been developed to really separate those issues of stormwater drainage from land disturbing activity. And the land disturbing activity is anything that you do that's going to expose bare dirt, whether it's cutting, filling, excavating, or creating a general need for erosion control facilities to prevent erosion control. And your stormwater drainage chapter, while it does include some erosion control-type issues because the stormwater management manual is housed there, it's primarily dealing with the long-term stormwater management related to development. Is that a good way to put that? So, we've essentially broken this into two separate chapters, and whereas right now in practice, we typically just issue one SDAP that includes everything, it's actually going to be something where you can get a land disturbing activity permit for small projects and medium projects, and when you're constructing an impervious surface, that's when you need a stormwater management permit that would be issued under 1532, and in a lot of cases, you may need both at some time during the life cycle of a project, but not necessarily at the same time. So, 1532 and 1534 are written so that everything basically that appears in green text is new or has an amendment to it, and so you can see that both sections have been significantly And I think, Andrea, do you want to speak to these at all? This is a little bit more in your... Sure, why don't you? Should have invited you up sooner.
1532. Good evening, members of the council and mayor. 1532, as it exists currently in the code, has basically been divided into 1534 and 1532. A lot of the same pieces are still there, they've just been subdivided into creating what we hope will make better sense moving forward for our citizens. 1534 covers more of your erosion and sediment control practices as well as excavation, so if you were to put a water line in or sewer line, and that's all you're doing, this would be a 1534 type of a project. 1532 is where we get into more of our stormwater. That's going to be your conveyances, your ponds, your bioswales, your rain gardens, your things along those natures. So, what we try to do is, as logically as possible, split them out, but still maintain all of the pieces that we would need to have for compliance to meet our current NPDS permit. So a lot of the pieces to comply with the NPDS permit exist between these two titles or chapters. Do you have anything?
Yeah, and I think the important thing to add is that previously, the chapters didn't have any statements related to the purpose of the chapter and why do we have this. That's been added, and you're also going to see that there's language that will eventually tie this to our permit processing chapter, and it talks about these things as being administrative decisions, which the permit processing chapter will have a section for, how do you handle an administrative-type permit versus quasi-judicial or legislative? And I think that generally, both chapters have some minimum thresholds, and so under the new 1534, some relatively minor to moderate activities can trigger that permit, but then when you get to 1532, you look at the exemptions list and you say, "I need a land clearing permit, but I am under the threshold for a stormwater drainage permit." And in some cases, you're going to see that you trigger both chapters for your particular project, but the land disturbing permit is definitely, it has a lower threshold for being triggered, and I think that's probably the most important aspect to remember. The other thing that you'll find is that the definitions have changed significantly, and a lot of these come straight out of the federal requirements and the requirements from the Department of Ecology, so in most cases, there is a very explicit reason why the language has been changed.
In 1532, we left it in track changes, so any of the red sections within the definitions, which would be 1532-020, the red sections are to bring us into compliance with the NPDS permit. That would match the definitions required under the permit that currently exist in the permit.
I think I'll stop there and just ask council members if they have any questions before we move on to the zoning chapters. And again, this is going to be on the agenda at the next council meeting for action, and so between now and then, if you do have questions, you can, of course, answer, ask us.
You were wide-eyed there, Fred.
I just had a very general question, which is, do you, how do you think this would affect someone trying to develop in the city?
Great question. I think that a lot of this is going to be dependent on the quality of soils that you have on your site. In some cases, LID can actually save developers money. In other cases, it's something that they have, they have a burden to prove that it will not work on their site because they have poor soils, and they have to go through a design exercise to demonstrate that before they can go and design a conventional-type system. I think the real burden here is the timing of when you do your feasibility analysis for soils. Previously, you would go get your entitlement, and then you would proceed to design a stormwater system that was based on a preliminary, a real preliminary study. Now you have to do a much greater amount of analysis and engineering before you can even apply to get a permit, and if something through the permitting process changes about your proposal, you then have to go back and potentially revise things. So I think it's putting more analysis on the front end of the process, and it really means that stormwater is, in a lot of ways, going to be driving your design, more so than you're, you know, trying to shoehorn in a stormwater system to fit what it is that you want to build.
And I think to add on that, at the, it's either September, October, Home Builders, Developers Forum, and Scott, you earlier, I think, was it September? Maybe August, I don't know. That was a major issue that the county brought up, especially for their rural areas, in that if somebody wants to build a house, and they're building a house from scratch, not necessarily remodeling, but they want to build a house, because they're now required to hire an engineer where they didn't previously used to, and you're now going to have to have somebody certified to do your soils analysis, that's basically, as I think it was discussed at the home builders, you know, if somebody wanted to build a house that had a much nicer kitchen, they may have to redesign their house because they didn't anticipate a $15,000 or $30,000 engineering bill. So that's going to be probably the biggest impact on somebody building a house, is where they used to be able to design and build a house, and they just, there wasn't really much outside the house to deal with. They hooked up the sewer, they hooked up the water. If they're in rural areas, they just had a drain field and a well. This is really going to generate costs that eventually will have to be, people will have to learn to incorporate, but it may mean building, you know, a house for less dollars a square foot. Now, one caveat is that this particular, right now, the city, under the 2005 manual that we adopted in 2012, 10, 12?
2010.
2010. Low-impact development was voluntary, optional. This current manual says that LID is mandatory. Now, the Sound Keepers Alliance, about a month or so ago, sent a letter to the Department of Ecology, basically saying, "You're not doing enough. You're not following the EPA mandate." They, Sound Keepers Alliance and the EPA do not want this to be optional. Now, that's a CAPO, I mean, that's right in the, that's a CAPO thing, because what's ultimately going to happen is in Kitsap County, you have very limited areas in which LID is even practical. And so if Sound Keepers Alliance is successful in forcing LID to be mandatory with no matrix to work your way out of it, you'll, in essence, render property undevelopable, and that's a much larger conversation. So I guess I'm explaining this because it's the, I want you to understand the full pendulum of back in the days when you did nothing, and then there were the days when you did something, and now there's going to be, this pendulum swing is continuing to the point to where potentially it's going to render properties unbuildable, and now you're getting into this conversation that was pretty hot topic in the late 90s. Remember, it was the, if regulation basically made property that you owned unbuildable, then you had to be compensated for it. I think as this whole LID conversation progresses, that conversation's going to come back to the fold. You've got property that you've had in your family because they were homesteaders, you are going to build a house on the Hood Canal or Sinclair Inlet, and you finally get to the point where you can do it, and now some regulation says, "You don't have infiltratable soils, you don't have an option to get out of it." I think that's going to bring that whole debate back.
Could you?
So, go ahead.
I just, could you explain the difference between a low-impact process and what we used to do?
Well, what we used to do, quite honestly, is for, it depended, if you're in a city lot, or let's say you're in a plat that had secondary drainage, the drainage mitigation facility, let's say up in Paulsville, there's a development called Woods and Meadows, and they have a big massive infiltration pond because they've got sandy soils, and everybody's house has a connection to the storm system in the street, and that goes to the pond, and the pond is sized to handle the streets and the homes.
So if, so a development up in McCormick Woods area would fall under that type of...
In McCormick, they don't, there, you have a situation where they don't have secondary systems. So a secondary system means that the house was intended to go to this mitigation facility. If a plat's developed where you only are treating the road in a facility, each individual house, depending on the lot size, now is either connected to sewer and water and needs to just accommodate roof drains and driveways. That's typically handled under an infiltration pit design that's right out of the manual, and so people would, in essence, do a mini drain field for their roof. Now, if you're in the rural areas, and you live on five acres and you don't have a house, you just drain away from your house, and it goes naturally into the woods. So that's really kind of the three main categories. You either just have a large enough lot where it just goes into the woods, and you be smart about how you design your, and grade your property. Then you've got the IPit, then you've got the, connected to a secondary system, and there's really then a third, which is these city lots, these older city lots that are really small, and you're just really just running water around to your neighbor because there are no storm systems. So, there, depending on the situation, you have different alternatives. So for somebody that's redeveloping an existing, let's say that thing we were talking about on what, Hull, that guy that wanted to build the three houses, he can build three houses, and the lots may be big enough to build three houses, but if the lots are small enough and the soils aren't good, he's going to really struggle because there's no drainage on where this increased stormwater runoff is going to go. So, that's a lot bigger problem than somebody that is building a house in McCormick, and they get a one-acre lot out in that area because they have a downstream, they have Anderson Creek to discharge to. So, it really varies. So, again, this is an interim step to ultimately where the EPA, and correct me if I'm wrong, where the EPA is wanting us to go, or wanting the nation to go, which is mandatory infiltration, because they're assuming that all soils infiltrate. Now, down south in Olympia, all soils infiltrate too rapidly because they have groundwater contamination problems, because it's the edge of the Vashon Drift Glacier where the glacier stopped overriding and all the, as it receded, all the gravels deposited, and so you drop water in the ground there, and it's gone. Anything north of the Vashon Drift limit is compacted hardpan, which if you dug through hardpan with a pick and it sparks, you know that you're in hardpan. Water doesn't penetrate hardpan, or you get into clairs, or you get in areas where you simply have a high groundwater table. Under those three conditions, you can't infiltrate. So, if you're required to put low-impact development into those types of soils, which is predominantly Kitsap County, you're not going to have much success. So, right now, this is a manual that, again, there's increased cost for a designer and a certified soil analysis to then deal with this runoff, and if you have any ability to go through the matrix and you have different alternatives, BMPs or best management practices or available known, you know, sciences to make it work, you're going to be able to check the box. But if you can't, you can currently get out of providing LID. In the future, that may go away.
And I, I was just going to say that, to add on to that, I think the important thing between the conventional system and LID is that in school, they teach you about the hydrologic cycle, where you get rain that falls out of the sky, and a certain percentage goes into the ground, a certain percentage runs off, some of it evaporates, some of it gets taken up by plants, and LID really, I think, seeks to try to maintain the pre-development condition versus where you have a site like Walmart, and you cover 70% of it with impervious surfaces up on Bethel, and you direct it to a centralized pond, you're not, you're not maintaining that existing pre-development cycle. So, those are the differences. It's trying to mimic pre-development as much as possible.
Do you have a question?
Couple. Where is this in the process? Has the Planning Commission had a work study on this, or can you tell me about how we've gotten to where we are?
Yes. So, last week, Planning Commission had its work-study session on this, and tomorrow night, they have their public hearing on this. It has been briefly mentioned at the Development Regulations Committee that we have, and I know that the Home Builders Association has been discussing this extensively as a county, at a countywide level, but they seem to be less interested in what the cities are doing as much as, and more so, I think, interested in what the county is up to.
Right. Again, at that same meeting, you'll note that Home Builders basically admitted that they understand, understand that in cities, urban-developed areas, it kind of is what it is. And in the rural areas, I think the big push was to, what was it? If you had a certain-sized lot undeveloped that you could, you know, get out of LID if you had a large enough lot, and not have to hire somebody to do soils testing. I can't remember the particulars. But the emphasis was if they were going to be, if the county was going to move ahead and have their own code, and they were going to, you know, pick a battle that was worth fighting, that was it. It was in the rural area, and they knew that in the cities, it was kind of a done deal.
Yeah, actually, to kind of paint that picture, and then hopefully we can move on away from rural issues, the county's rural areas is divided into really rural areas, and then these census-urbanized tracts, which are high-density, more than 1,000 people per square mile portions, vast swaths in rural Kitsap. And so it's those areas that they're having to evaluate their LID feasibility, more so than if they were inside a city limit. And that's something that DOE is mandated, and there was nothing we could do about it, that Kitsap County could do about it. But going back to, I think, I wanted to talk about a question that you had asked about costs. DOE did hire Herrera to analyze about a dozen different development scenarios, using both the proposed manual or the 2012 manual and the manual from 2005, and found that there were many situations in which costs went down and situations when costs went up. It really depended on what kind of construction you were proposing, commercial, residential, and it can, it can change, you know, 20 feet away, so it's really site to site. But I think it's fair to assume that the homeowners are going to feel the pinch more than the commercial development, and that also, this is what... And that also, this is what all of Western Washington is facing.
Other questions at this point? Okay. Ready to move on?
Have we gotten any comments from anybody on this so far?
Only from the Soundkeepers Alliance.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a comment as much as a...
We're watching you.
I think so. And only what the Planning Commission provided last Tuesday night.
Yeah, so we'll see what the results are tomorrow after the Planning Commission, and there are recommended changes. We'll outline those to you moving forward. And I will say that, you know, we're, we're doing what we need to, to achieve compliance here, but as we go through and do the second step in updating our code, if we identify any deficiencies between now and February, we can clean things up between now and then if something is identified.
One more question.
Yes.
So one of the principles to make this whole LID program work is understanding what's on your site and what it can accommodate. And so it's what's, it's what we're calling a site assessment, I believe. And so that, that's the first critical step that, where you're really considering what you can do or what you can't do on your property. And how is the city proposing to accommodate the site assessments? Are they going to be meeting on-site? Is it an application style? What are we looking at?
It's through the application process, and we have a, technically, it's optional. I think it's written that they have to have a pre-application meeting, and as part of that pre-application meeting, you have to provide your documentation on soils so that we can have a conversation that's based on the realities of your site. We don't prevent anybody from applying at any time so that they can still vest their application if they're ready to submit, but they would still have a meeting after their application is filed to still have that same conversation, and then they have an opportunity to revise things. But, yeah, we're asking that they provide us with that information at the, that early phase in development, in the application process.
Yeah. Again, the biggest impact's going to be, and it's the same situation, that people have an onsite septic system that is a, has a pretreatment device. You have to have, you know, twice annual, you know, semi-annual inspections, and it's just a cost associated with that. This, the learning heard for home builders and owners of property that want to build is they're going to have to have somebody knowledgeable to go to their specific property and determine, you know, do they have infiltrative soils? Do they have steep slopes over 30%? And they're not, they may have infiltratable soils, but not close, you know, they'll, they have to have a certain setback from the top of the bank. So it really is going to be case by case, and until they hire that geotechnical engineer or certified...
Geotech. It'll be a geotech.
Yeah, or geotech. So that's that upfront cost that I was talking about earlier.
Mr. Dina, you got another question?
Um, no, I'll hold off on it. That's fine.
Others?
Are we getting a rush of applications in to beat the vesting deadline?
We're already seeing that happening.
Okay.
Not to imagine.
Large development, I mean, the window's closing for a large project, other than the one project on Sedgwick that they're trying to determine if they are going to...
Try to meet the deadline.
They'd have to redesign if they didn't, because they already had it designed, I believe.
Yeah, we've had a few things come in the door in the last three or four weeks of people trying to get their building permits filed before the deadline so that they can vest. And it, you know, it should be noted that we have a whole lot of vested lots in preliminary plats and at McCormick Woods that are not subject to these new standards unless they lose their vesting because they get final plat and then don't build on the lots for a certain period of time. So most everybody that we know about that has some sort of entitlement is still going to be able to move forward on this, assuming that they have a permit that vested them to the stormwater regulations.
Right. The vesting is kind of a parallel track to the LID issue.
If they only built, and we've talked about this at length, but if they only built a pond but didn't go forward and submit a subdivision or a building permit, they didn't vest anything. But all the people that have that subdivision or who have applied for a building permit, or if they got an SDAP and built a pond and all their parking lot impervious surfaces and just have pads, they're going to be just fine. So moving on to the zoning sections.
What page does that start on, Nick?
54 is the first page of that. This, Section 20.122, that's the future location for what is currently in 1640. This is the chapter that outlines our density calculation setbacks and other sort of quantitative standards in our code. This is being updated just for a handful of, I think my pages got turned around here. Bear with me for a second. So previously, we had maximum covered surfaces. We needed to update definitions to talk about impervious surfaces in our zoning tables. We talk about the use of permeable materials versus impervious materials in relation to lot coverage. And there were actually a couple of other housekeeping things in here that the, related to height, were sort of incomplete, just incomplete sentences in that they didn't clearly state that 39 feet was a maximum in several districts. And then we also updated our density calculation methodology, which before was really a complicated calculation to make, and the attorney just wanted to recommend that we fix that.
I got a question for you on that. 20.122.035, minimum density, is that otherwise used in this chapter or in Title 20?
What do you mean?
Well, when you go back to the table, densities in the maintenance table, it's only showing maximum density in a row. There's no discussion of minimum.
Yeah, we don't have minimums at this time. And I guess the third step in updating our zoning code, one of the issues that we've had with annexations is that when somebody annexes into the city, our zoning doesn't match what the county has in place for zoning, and the county has minimums and maximums. And so the thought is that if we adopt the county's zoning tables parallel to ours so that as we annex things, we can give them, we can let their zoning not change, that we, we're just adding this as a sort of a, so that we don't have to change it later, I guess. So if we create a zone with a minimum, then it, it references minimums and maximums.
Okay.
But we currently don't have minimums and nothing is proposed in this update.
Most of that new language is there on page 58, the red, the red paragraphs.
Moving on to the parking chapter, we added a provision that just deals with LID, best management practices in parking lots to make sure that they're allowed. That's pretty straightforward, and then the same with landscaping. We want to make sure that when somebody builds a rain garden, that the rain garden can count as their landscaping requirement and is not considered a stormwater facility in addition to what they would otherwise have to provide. So we've talked about 1532, which starts around page 90, so we're...
Page you on now, Nick?
I'm, I'm trying to figure that out.
That was fun. For scavenger hunts.
Oh, yeah. So next is the Planned Low-Impact Development Chapter. This was previously 1680. It starts on page 137, and this entire chapter is being removed. And that was created when we adopted the 2005 Stormwater Management Manual, which had optional LID, and it was a way to incentivize LID. We know, feel it's appropriate to give bonuses for something that is now mandatory, and so as we look to revamp our, our low, our planned unit development regulations, we will look to give incentives for different types of provisions that people provide in their development proposals, but LID isn't one of them, and so this is just going away for now, and...
So this entire section's being struck at this time?
Exactly. And so that is, I believe, the extent of our revisions at this time.
And all of this body of work, other than the one section that was given to us in air, is going to Planning Commission tomorrow.
Correct. And it will...
And then this body of work will then come to the council. It's on next Tuesday's agenda?
Correct. And it, it will be several ordinances. Each chapter has its own ordinance, and so it's going to be five or six different items that you have to approve, and so we'll take them one by one. And I think I'll just conclude and, I believe...
I did have one more question just to follow up.
Okay, certainly.
Information on, beginning on page 132?
That was the memo the attorney provided, I believe.
Is that going somewhere?
No, that is not a, that was supposed to be right after the staff report, and somehow it got shuffled.
Oh, okay.
I think when we send this over to the clerk, it, each one of these was its own attachment, and so maybe they got mixed up when they got printed.
Okay.
My last comment was, as I mentioned, this is, it's, it's an interesting mandate because they really are emphasizing the public process in all of this, but we really don't have a whole lot of choice in this, and I think that if the city fails to comply and adopt this, we are potentially facing, what is it, $30,000 a day fines? Under our permit?
10.
10? $10,000 a day in fines?
Just from ecology.
So...
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
So Kitsap Builders Association, or Building Association, on January 5 has invited...
I saw that today.
Okay, every jurisdiction has a seat at the table to talk with DOE about. Were you going to speak to this later?
We're sending two or three staff to that meeting. Mark and I have another commitment with the Energy Audit Consultants that day, but we're, I believe it's at least Zach and Andrea and maybe Thomas are going, so. Smirking in the back, maybe he's not going. We're sending at least two, maybe three.
Good. It'll be a good meeting, I think.
So other questions? But lots of reading to do.
Yeah, I got to get my mind around it.
Yes.
All of our surrounding cities, are they trying to shoot for that same deadline, or have some of them already passed this?
Most of the jurisdictions around us are at about the same point at this point now. They are doing their hearings or they're wrapping up their hearings. They've already done their public processes in a lot of cases, and so everybody's trying to get to the finish line before the 31st.
Thank you. Pretty hefty agenda next week, but as long as you read the materials at this, there's a lot of items on there, that's for certain, so.
And like I said, this is the code piece that's mandated for the work that we're going to be doing in January and February on cleaning up ancillary items, including coming back to you with a new handbook, the one that we had developed as a catch-all developer's handbook, has gone away. That became problematic, and we're taking it back to what it was originally, which is more of a public works. With all the, with all the changes that the planning department's made over the years in code and actually establishing code and the rewrites, and this is another example of that, we're now going to have a, with more things in code that provide direction, we'll now have a handbook that's geared more towards specifications and standards and get away from more like land use planning code information. So that will come to you early in 2017 as well.
We've had that ad hoc development code committee. I believe they're going to have one or two more meetings. The sign code committee has just kicked off here in the last month. We've done a tremendous amount, spent a lot of staff time and attorney time on this code development that's, you know, just about coming to its end, and by February, March at the latest, we'll have most of the heavy lifting done on that, and have still have the sign code left to complete next year and some design standards and things of that nature. They're new projects, but we'll have at least this buttoned up and organized anyway, so this is the goal, so.
Since you mentioned it, I'll report that the sign code is actually going really well and is nearly ready for a release. I think we have one more meeting we need to get through the last few sections, but we're, we've made a lot of progress on that.
Wow, we put that off for years, and it's just, we need some more drama than that, Nick.
You gave me a good committee. Everybody gets along, and I think we're going in the same direction, so.
While we're talking about code, did we ever get any comments back from KBA on design standards for single-family residential development?
They're opposed.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, that was, they'll, they'll watch and wait. Realtors were, Mike didn't want to comment until he saw what, what we came out with. When I reached out to him, he said, "Wait and see." And, you know, home builders just don't want, want it at all, and just unfortunately, we're seeing things that we don't want in our community, and I think it's necessary for us to, to police that, so. It's unfortunate that the industry isn't taking, you know, in their own hands, but so. I think that's coming forward after the first three or two, isn't it?
Yeah, I think, you know, really, we need to deal with the interim regulations and a handful of other items in February because they expire, I think, right around the second meeting in February, and then the, the more qualitative design items are going to come forward probably in March and into April. But I think we'll have a pretty good framework, framework of a code ready for adoption in February to where we can migrate everything over to Title 20, including our existing zoning, and then we can work on those design guidelines for single-family. We'll be working with a consultant on citywide design guidelines, and those are kind of the loose ends that we need to take on as, as the last step in the process.
Positive comment. I know it went to the Planning Commission, the residential piece, and I've got positive comment from that, so. Other questions? Well, have a good evening.